Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session for Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. We are here to talk about issuance of bonds. My name is Ty Mensler, Chair of the Board. We have Commissioner Kevin Muhia, County Manager Mam Chávez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and our Budget and Finance Team. We are going to, this is being livestreamed through our Thurston County YouTube channel. You can also join by conference call 360-252-9020, PIN 1234. One minute. Commissioner County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner. Assuming we recall, we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago related to the ERP project and where we are in the status, as well as at that time, we had a conversation and one of the financial methods as to how we're going to be able to fund this project with the issuance of bonds. And it's perhaps an opportunity to have a conversation with the Board in terms of informational basis as to how the process of issuance of bond really works to build a level of understanding by the Board members. With that in mind, Robin?
Thank you, Romero, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the time this afternoon to look at this topic. It is especially relevant right now because we will soon be bringing to the Board the contract for the ERP. And we want to be able to go forward with confidence that our funding strategy is, has the backing of the Board. And that strategy is to issue 10-year bonds to be able to pay for the new system. So we want you to be comfortable with the concept and what's behind it. So today is a half hour to talk about bonds in the county, how we go about doing them, what our current debt is, and then we'll arrange for our Bond Council and Bond Advisors to also come in the very near future to have a work session with you. I'm going to share my screen. And make sure I share the right one. I always lose my cursor when I have to have three screens open. There we go. So, as I said this afternoon, it's all about bonds. These are the types of debt that local government issues, other than small loans. When we're talking about large amounts of money, we generally issue bonds. So there's four basic types. There are limited tax general obligation bonds. They only require approval by the Board of County Commissioners. They do not go out for a vote. They are paid from your current revenue, or you can go out for a vote to increase revenue through levy lift or some other mechanism that's available to you to increase revenue, but it's usually within the available amounts that we have. The second type of bonds is unlimited tax general obligation bond. Unlimited means that these go out for a vote and they require 60% approval by the voters. And what is meant by unlimited is that the money used to pay an unlimited general obligation bond is above your normal levy. So part of the vote is to vote the property tax increase that will pay for these bonds. And that's part of why you need 60% approval. The third type is called revenue debt or revenue bonds. Those bonds are specifically tied to a utility or some other form of enterprise that generates revenue. So if you think about our water systems or our sewer systems, those utilities bring in payments from the people who use them. You get your utility bill, you pay your bill. That creates revenue from the county, and it's that revenue that is used to pay for a revenue bond. So it's very specifically tied to a certain stream of revenue. And then there are assessment-backed debt or bonds. And for that, what you do is you make an improvement, like say there's a certain stretch of road that the county improves, and then we create an improvement district around that construction. And the improvement district, so in my example, a road, you would create a road improvement district, and you would levy a tax on everyone who benefits specifically from that improvement. And you'd use that revenue to pay those bonds. So again, it's tied to, where a revenue debt is tied to a certain enterprise or service, assessment is usually tied to a specific project where you create a tax around it. In Thurston County, we have a policy about issuing debt, and that's governed by the county's Finance Committee. The Finance Committee consists of the County Treasurer, the County Auditor, and the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. This committee authorizes, through this policy, our policy authorizes all four types of debt. The policy specifies that we will issue debt on a competitive basis. And what that means is when we go to issue bonds, we put out through our Bond Council and Bond Advisors an advertisement, if you will, that on a specific date and time, the county will accept bids to buy our bonds. And those bids consist of the terms, the timing of the payments, the amount of interest on each payment. But we solicit a competitive bid for our bonds, and we sell the bonds to the bidder who gives us the best terms. So it's a competitive sale. Another way to sell bonds is a negotiated sale, where you work with one particular person or entity who wants to buy the bonds, and we negotiate the terms. The county, to my knowledge, has never engaged in a negotiated sale of our debt. And according to our accounting policy, that would require approval by our Finance Committee. Another aspect of the policy is that no term for our debt will exceed the useful life of the improvement. So if we buy a building and we think it's a 30-year building, the maximum length of time for our debt would be 30 years. And you'll hear in a moment, we're considering issuing debt for our ERP software. We believe that it has a 10-year useful life, so we're proposing 10-year bonds. We wouldn't issue 15-year bonds on software that we think has a 10-year life. Although we've had munis for 20 years, you don't want to plan that way. The county may not issue long-term debt to finance current operations. This is part of county policy. It's also a very bad practice. You do not want to issue debt to finance your ongoing costs and payroll. And the county policy requires that if we would refinance our bonds or refund, we want to do that when there is clear benefit to the county. And the policy defines that as, we'll have savings of at least 3% on net present value. Last item in the policy that I wanted to touch on is there is a requirement that the county will perform arbitrage calculations. Arbitrage is where if we take bond proceeds and instead of spending them right away, they sit in a bank account for whatever reason, maybe the project's delayed, maybe we haven't gotten the bill yet, maybe we took out all the debt in one lump for a project that's going to last for three years. But for whatever reason, the money is sitting in the bank, we would put that into interest-bearing accounts. And when you do arbitrage calculations, what you're doing is showing that the amount of money that you earn in interest is less than the amount of money that you owe in interest on the bonds. Because we are prohibited from issuing debt where the county makes a profit. We cannot do that by law, and we have to report to the IRS that we are not earning money on the debt that we issue. So those are just a few things that the county's policy covers. Here's our debt capacity. We can have up to 1.5% of the total value of property in the county. And this is our property tax base, up to 1.5% in debt that the county commissioners authorizes. So our debt limit for non-voted debt is a little over $610 million. And for the total debt load, that's for voted and non-voted, but we could have up to 2.5% of the property value or a little over $1 billion in debt. Now, I give you those numbers, but I have to say that we really couldn't have $610 million in debt because right now the county has no way to pay for that much in debt. So really, our limitation is our ability to pay. And I would say that the same is true with voted debt. If the citizens are not willing to vote to pay for it, we could not take on more bonds and more debt in the county. So our limitation is more, how much can we afford to pay? Our current outstanding debt in the county, all of our debt is non-voted, limited obligation, general obligation bonds. We currently have just under $46 million in outstanding debt. It's from these different issues. They're called series. So the 2010A series, 2010B, we name our series by the year of issue. So in 2010, the county issued three series of bonds. These are the dates when they'll be paid off. Series A will be paid off in December of 2022. We currently owe a little over $1.5 million on that. Series 2010B will be paid off at the end of 2030. We owe $10.3 million, a little under 10.3. And 2010C, we owe currently $2 million. It'll be paid off in June of 2029. The 2010 bonds were used to pay for construction at our Tilly Campus in our Public Works Buildings. The EOC was constructed in 2010. We had, we did work on the 3,400 building that we're still paying for, as Commissioner Edwards often points out. And there were some random projects we did at that time, small projects. And the payments are mainly being made from Public Works. And these are the only bonds that we're paying for out of general fund in part. We pay $390,000 a year out of our general fund. In 2015, we did a refund or refinancing of bonds that were issued in 2004 and 2005. We currently owe just under $3.4 million on those bonds. They'll be paid off in September of 2015. Those bonds were mainly used at the FJC for improvements. They are being paid for from detention sales tax and REIT I and a very small amount from conservation futures. In 2016, we also issued a refund for debt that had been issued in 2007 and I think 2009. That debt will be paid off in 2030. We currently owe just under $29 million. And those payments are coming from detention sales tax and REIT. So do you have any questions at this point about the current debt in the county?
Quick clarification on the 2015, Robin. You have a payout of September 2015?
Oh, that's probably 2025.
Yeah, I'm just going to make sure that we captured that.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that. Yes, we're paying debt on something that we paid off 10 years ago.
In 2016, is that the jail? If it's coming out of detention sales tax?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from the Board at this point? Not seeing any.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Never mind. It was like right at the tip and then, never mind.
It will come back to you.
It will come back to me. I'll probably ask it towards the end.
Commissioner Edwards has his hand up.
I was just checking to see if he could see it. I actually don't have a question at this point.
He was testing the blue hand.
Testing the chair. Okay, I pass.
Yeah, you did.
Let's go. Let's go on, Robin.
Okay, great. So the county has an excellent bond rating. We have a bond rating of AA, and it's a solid bond rating. We've had that bond rating, I want to say we stepped up to AA in 2000... I want to say it was like 2013, 2013 or 2014, we went up to AA. That's a very good rating. Bond ratings go anywhere from C, which is considered not investment grade, to a high of AAA. There are not a lot of counties in Washington State that have AAA bonds. Bond ratings are kind of like credit scores, where the whole purpose of a bond rating, we have a raider come in. The county currently uses Standard &amp; Poor's, and they do an analysis of the county's fiscal position and give us a rating. And their rating is an indication to investors of what kind of a risk they're taking on that the county will default. And that's basically what they're looking for, and that will affect the interest that comes in on those bids to buy our bonds. So the better our credit rating or our bond rating, the lower our interest rates will be. And this has a real impact on county finances. I've been asked in the past, how can we boost our credit rating? And PFM, who is our Bond Advisor Company, they issued a pretty nice little, they did a webinar, and they've issued this little flyer on, here's five ways to boost your credit rating. Make long-term planning a priority. One of the things that they say is that with Standard &amp; Poor's in particular, the very top management characteristic they look for is, does the Board look long-term? Do you look out in the future and what the impact of your decisions are on the future financial position of the county? The second thing that they recommend is that you allocate and maintain fund balance appropriately. And yes, they are talking about that two months of fund balance in the bank. And if you show a trend of a deteriorating fund balance, that will impact your credit score. This is one of the reasons that when we're on a downward trend in our general fund fund balance, I get a little hesitant about issuing bonds because it wouldn't look good to the raiders, and we're raided every time we do a bond issue. But right now would be a great time to issue bonds because we are going to talk to you next week about an all-time high in fund balance. The other three are, they encourage us to distinguish between what's a conservative budget position? Are we really improving our position because we're in a conservative approach to budgeting and fiscal practices? Or are there fiscal challenges ahead that we've got realistic plans and strategies on how to address? They encourage that we have key metrics that will align with what the rating agencies are looking for. So are we tracking fund balance? Are we tracking debt load? Are we doing some analysis of what the economy is doing around us? And do we have effective policies and procedures around debt and debt fund balance and our other financial practices? So the better we are at those five things, the better our bond rating will be.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, your hand is still up. No questions?
Well, I just wondered if you were paying attention.
No paying attention.
Okay, well, I'm going to keep going. Oh, yeah.
How do you get to the AAA bond or the AAA bond rating?
So this is what I was talking about. If we want to step up from a AA to a AAA, it would be a big lift because AAA is pretty rare, but it's these five things that we would need to improve our performance. Long-term planning, which I'm going to, you know, this is a personal side note, but that includes biennial budgeting. Allocate fund balance appropriately and maintain the fund balance. That's going to be a fund balance policy. Distinguish between conservative practices and fiscal challenges. I think we do a good job of that. We could be better at posting our metrics and having effective policies. I'd say that the county is very good at policies, but I think that we need to get a little better at memorializing our long-term planning and our fund balance approach.
Thank you.
So here's the opportunities in front of us where we're talking about potentially issuing bonds. Our current bonds, callable, is when you can refinance or refund them. So we have some of our bonds that will never be callable. We're just going to have to pay them until the end. But some of our bonds, we have an option now to refinance them. And so I've asked our Bond Advisors to take a look and see what our opportunities are right now. To see if we can get a better rate and hit that 3% in savings. And it probably is a very good time for refund. We're talking about our large technology purchases.
Commissioner Edwards, do you mind muting yourself? That is a bit of a ground noise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're talking about large technology purchases, and again, we're talking about assuming a useful life of 10 years. We're talking about potentially buying buildings to address a part of our county's space needs. Of course, not a done deal anywhere yet, but that's part of what's on the table. And as you've heard, we need some major repairs in the buildings that we currently own. And there's an opportunity there to fund those repairs through bonds. So here is my proposal to you with only a minute left. And I'm not looking for any kind of guidance today, but we will bring this back to you. I'll be scheduling a work session with PFM and Foster Pepper. They are our Bond Advisors and our Bond Council. No later than July of 2021. We will be issuing the 10-year debt to pay for the ERP and the Amanda replacements. So I am looking for approval near term to go ahead and issue those bonds. We will bring you, again, we'll be bringing you the contract for the ERP within the next few weeks. In the fall of 2021, I am extremely hopeful that the Board will make some decisions regarding space needs, the use of these buildings, and the major maintenance projects we need to do in our currently owned buildings, and determination on if we should be looking to purchase additional property. And late this year or into next year, I would propose that once you make those decisions about what we're doing regarding space, that we would start to issue debt to cover that. So that's the plan that I'm proposing. And we're out of time, but that's what we had for you today. that's what we had for you today.
So Commissioner Edwards has his hand up. I'm gonna, one question I have is about the these different series. So is there is there a significant additional cost to us doing these, you know, multiple series like you did back in 20, whatever it was? And it sounds like we'd be doing it that way this time? Or is it better to like try to put it all together and lump it all out at once?
So there's a an efficiency that comes with issuing the bonds all at once in that you only pay, you know, just like with buying a house, there's costs to to obtaining a mortgage, you pay points and it's it's not quite the same in issuing debt, but there are those costs to issue debt. So there's some savings to be had by going in a bundle. The 2010 series are are different because of the types of bonds we issue. We've got Build America bonds, we've got these energy bonds, and then we have regular bonds. I would not, I wouldn't do that again unless there was a huge benefit to the county. That that turned out to not be terribly to our advantage. The the bigger factor though in timing is that you want to be careful of arbitrage. So there could be an advantage to, you know, once we decide what we're gonna do, depending on when we think we would have to start paying for the purchase of buildings or the maintenance projects and what we currently own, we would time bond issuance to have the money like almost just in time rather than sitting in a bank drawing interest that we could be penalized for by the IRS.
Commissioner Edwards.
Oh, there you go. Part of my question was, you already asked it there, Ty, but I am looking at if we do a refinance, what is the dollar amount benefit that we end up with? If we were to get a lower interest rate? So we can compare what we would save in, I guess, a smaller payment to pay off the same debt or something. What what's the dollar amount that we end up saving?
So that's what we've asked Duncan Brown to to assess for us. He'll come back when when they meet with you, they'll have that answer. I can tell you that in the past, we've saved millions in bond payment through refunds.
They wanted to, they wanted 2016, we saved a lot of money by refinancing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're close out of time. Commissioner, we hear anything? I expect there's more to come with bond council and it sounds like we're on track for.
Thank you.
Wrap up?
Yep. Robin already outlined the next steps. So we'll be coming back to you with briefing with bond council. But also, please keep in mind when you're considering approving the contract with the ERP, is all this wrapped together related to how we're going to be able to pay that? So it is it is timely.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Edwards, thank you, Robin. Thank you.